I'm going to call the Springfield City Council Work Session to order with roll call.
Mayor Van Gordon?
Here.
Uh, Counselor Pitts?
Here.
Counselor Mo?
Here.
Counselor Rodley?
Here.
Counselor Stare?
Here.
Counselor Woodrow?
Here.
Here, thank you.
All right, we have one item tonight, which is the Housing and Homelessness Project List Update with Erin. Hello Erin.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Glad to be here with you on Oregon's birthday. I'm here tonight seeking direction from you all on a list of potential projects in Springfield to address affordable housing and homelessness. Recently, as you may know, the state legislature and our local legislators, Representative Lively and Senator Byer, have made allocations toward projects in Springfield to address affordable housing and homelessness. So this is a mix of state general funds, federal ARPA funds, and each carry a different set of restrictions and purpose. But the city does have a role in guiding these funds toward given projects. Some of these, these are, sorry, these are one-time funds, but some of them can be used over a number of years. I would just like to point out, given that we have other federal funds, CDBG and home, that we still are receiving to address social service needs and affordable housing. These are projects on top of those additional projects and staff time is limited in how much we can put effort into, which is why we are seeking your guidance. We've assembled the list of projects in your packet tonight from known efforts that are ready to proceed. Many of the projects listed here actually are not eligible for federal funds, CDBG, or for a variety of reasons. There are, of course, other efforts happening to address affordable housing and homelessness, but in many cases, those projects either are already being funded through CDBG, are being funded through the county, or will come in later through a request for proposals. So tonight, I really just want to hear from you all on the list we've put together on where we should focus your efforts or our efforts. And a couple of questions, I guess, to guide that. How does the list look? Is there anything on the list that a majority of you would like to not see move forward? And is everything on the list? So I'll just take notes. I'll just add, again, we're just getting guidance tonight. I'll be coming back to you during a work session to sort of sift through the matching between funding sources and projects. But we can, however you want to take tonight.
So Erin, could you clarify about this? This is, this list is sort of all came from sort of all the, all the different conversations that people have either called you about or saying, like work that we've known about in the last couple of years. Could you tell us a little bit about, a little bit more about the source of the projects on this list and how much vetting's been into it?
Sure. So the, I would say, yeah, some of these projects we've actually seen come through the CDBG RFP, but for a variety of reasons are not eligible based on some of those restrictions and sort of a cap we can spend toward social services, for example. Some of these are actually, like the manufactured home park for Linda Lane, or sort of ants, right, these are specific projects that were called out either through the state legislative funding or Representative Lively, specifically his allocation through ARPA funds. Some of them have been like the ADU incentive program that we've kind of, as staff, when council was directing us to help incentivize ADUs, sort of came up then, but we didn't really have a funding source that we could utilize for that project. And then others sort of came out of where the emergency operations center sort of stepped up when COVID happened. So to provide downtown porta potties or help support cahoots. Those are projects that those funding sources went away, but here's another funding opportunity to continue those efforts. So they've kind of all been in and around the city, but we get, haven't been able to figure out how to really fund them or continue, and that's a question for you all if you want to.
Okay, Mary Lee.
Yes, I was curious about the, the vetting process. Some of these on here I, I know have not met requirements in the past. I have, I'll start right out by saying that my biggest issue with this, my biggest feeling about this is these are one-time funds. And I look at the, where we can go with this is one-time expense to meet, meet those, meet those issues, those projects with a one-time expense. As opposed to ongoing support or sustainability. So the first thing that I look at when I look at these projects is, okay, what, is there something there that can take money right now and use it? As opposed to then turning around and saying, okay, now we need four more years of money from you now that we've gotten started. So I, I'm looking at, this is one-time funds for us to allocate to a one-time expense. Because we, we're not sitting in a situ, we have money right now, but we're not sitting in a situation where we can automatically apply two or three staff people to help with the sustainability, you know, and that kind of thing. So if there's a project there that can manage with a one-time support, one-time expense support, that is where, where for the most part, I'm drawing a line. And until you look at something like cahoots, which is something that we have already dedicated ourselves to making sure that we have the help with, with that ongoing program because it's already established. But it's a one, it would be a one-time donation from this particular funding that we have. But it's, I just, I'm very leery of getting money into something, but then it's, it meets expectations of people and then all of a sudden, it's not going to be there because the money's not there to sustain it. So to me, that's, that's a defining issue. And along with that, I, I think my, my mind is, I was looking at this material today and look and had conversations with myself and a couple of other people. Is, is there a reason or have we considered going out for RFPs for this money?
Us, the city?
Yeah. I mean, is there, is there a reason why or why not? That we could go out for RFPs for this, for this one? I mean, I realize they're not all lumped together. But is there a reason why we could or could not do that?
I would say for, I'm looking at this list, none of these, perhaps except for the downtown porta potties and the cahoots van, none of these would fall within the city's purview of what we would administer. We'd help guide a project perhaps, but we would not be on the end of, let's say, managing the project. And so it's, I guess, many of these are actually, we're leaving them up to the developer or the agency themselves to go out and find money. And I guess we, we are the grant source in this case. If that, and there hasn't been other sources that they've been able to find, is why I think some of these are still not fully funded.
So this could not be administered the same way we do CDBG? I mean, not, I'm not saying they're, they're not equal. I mean, as far as qualifications and, and what is necessary. But we do RFPs for CDBG money. If people come and say, this is our project, this is how we've got it set up, and this is the grant money we'd like to have.
Okay, maybe I misunderstood, sorry. I think what's tricky here is that there are four different funding sources that we are dealing with. So that's why we, I guess we wanted to vet it by you all first in that sense. But we can certainly think about that.
Okay, I realize that the, the three million for the manufactured home park is pretty, almost pretty much specified. You know, set aside for that, for that issue alone. But I was just thinking with some of the others, having an outline and a, and a setup procedure for what somebody wants to do with a project, how they're going to staff and how they're going to do it as far as being able to meet the, the needs and the requirements for the, for this one-time funding. Okay, that's me, that's it for now.
Thank you. And I appreciate hearing Counselor Woodrow's perspective. And I'm gonna take just a little time because I have opinions and a little bit of a different perspective because I, I do understand that this is one-time funding and as I'm thinking about all of these different funds that are coming in and all of these ways, this, we, we still have to look for other funding. So this isn't the end. So I see this as also an opportunity to invest in some of these projects that have just, we've sort of been pushing them to the side. And so it's an opportunity to invest and to potentially leverage because we're still going to be looking for other funding as it comes available. And by having projects that are basically shovel-ready or that we're already moving on is going to increase our opportunities for attracting additional funding. That's my opinion about it. So, and then I just want to go because I scribbled on the pages because I do have some things that I think are important. I think really getting, sort of digging into the shelter for the unhoused. One of the things I reached out to Erin in advance and asked the mayor when we were chatting about it is, you know, investing in the Ebert Methodist Church and taking care of the sprinklers, that's a congregation that has, you know, really supported the unhoused and was available as an Egan warming site. And it would be great if we could dig into that. And looking at, you know, at the shelters, you know, what, what do, what can we do so that we're not every year looking at, at how to shelter the unhoused and how do we invest? And those folks who are willing to do that work and give them the opportunity to leverage that support into finding other funding. I also, a few of these are around land and properties, and I do think that we could invest in buying land and more land banks. It's going to increase, again, it's going to give us a little bit of a leverage. And we could throw, the, the thing that we can do is if we have land, we can throw those into those RFP processes and we can add that if we're going out looking to attract some partners who want to build affordable housing, if we've got land offered to that, and then they're able to, to leverage that into funding for building their projects. I also just, some of the things I starred were the F Street Co-op. I think we already leaned into doing some creative housing in this way. And I'd love to see us just continue to just diversify the affordable funding. And then I know, or the fund, the diversify the affordable housing in the different ways that we do it. And then, well, there isn't a price to it, to both of these, the, and I wasn't here for the ADU duplex incentive program. I think that's awesome and probably super timely and would love to see us figure out how to support that. And again, it may be that we can just find some ways to incentivize that. And then there isn't a price to the resource for homeless families, but that's another hole that I think, if there's a way for us to partner and help support that. Because it, it, like, you know, Counselor Woodrow said, it may be one time because these are one-time funds. But is there a way for us to just really sort of make a dent in building the infrastructure so that we can move people out of that precariousness? That's all I have to say for now, but I might be back.
We will stay tuned.
Okay, thanks.
Leonard?
Thank you. So I agree with Counselor Woodrow about the one-time funds. I mean, it, it's a fact, it is a one-time fund. So in that spirit, I wanted to revisit in our response to an RFP that we had about two years ago that would create a combination permanent Egan site and a resource center for the unhoused at the memorial building at 799 A Street. I would love to devote whatever money it took to secure that from the, the SEDA, which is the current owner of the property. And I, I know we have a certain amount of sway as council on what SEDA decides. So it seems like it's a perfect solution in a lot of ways. So the, the value of a resource center would be to provide vocational training, possibly transition to housing for, for the unhoused. And if we could have a combination Egan site and a resource center there, it would also potentially solve the problem of the, the porta potts and the, I, I think the Lou is the name of the product, the project number 12. It would be a potential site for that as well. So with any money left over, I think it was in the neighborhood of 700, 800 K for the memorial building. I, I'd love to see number six, which is the mobile home park that Representative Lively was backing. Number 10, the cahoots van, and number 12, the 225, the, the 225 for the public toilets, if they weren't already financed in the purse, in the purchase of the, the memorial building. I, as an observation, I am almost done here. I think that if we were to adopt the memorial building as an Egan site, I think it would have the approval of the pastor of Ebert, who's Reverend June Father Gill. I am, I'm, I'm pretty sure that she would back that, back that plan. That's all I got. Thank you.
Joe?
Thank you very much. Well, Erin, you ready? I'm just gonna go right down the list and you can, and then, and I think that would be much easier for you instead of bouncing around. So I'm gonna go down from, from one to 16.
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Number one, on the Egan Center, it's, I, I'm mostly curious as to the applicability of the funding source for something like that. I would think that some, that type of ask would be best with the CDBG dollars, if that makes any sense, probably, maybe not applicable, I'm not sure.
Yeah, great question. I mean, in theory, the intent of the CDBG program is certainly to address the population that's being here. But the nature of Ebert as a religious site is precluding the federal funds from being combined there.
Yeah, I forgot all about that element. So, yeah. So I'm not completely opposed to that. But I, and I know that there's mention of the memorial building and I am completely opposed to use of the memorial building for that. And that I won't support that in the future at all because we've got a very large project right across the street that we've already talked about. We've already basically have said multiple times that that memorial, memorial building is, is not in the equation. And I know it's got interest that keeps popping up, but I know that in meetings before, someone, correct me if I'm wrong, that, that is off the table. So going on down to number two is that I can't support two, which is tied into three because it's got some very significant ongoing costs and these are one-time dollars. This is a, this is not a one-time ask. So I can't support either one of those. What, if we supported two, then that would, that would tie us into number three. And if we didn't go with number three, then they would have no funding for that. So therefore it'd be a waste of money. Number four, I, I'm not opposed to it. Number five, I'm also not opposed to it. I'm not saying that I am sold on both of them, but us, but I'm not, I'm not going to fight, right? Number six is that I do support that, but it's, I'm kind of curious, I would kind of base my support as to, okay, who's going to end up with or who's going to end up owning that? So that, and you know, if, if we end up owning it or who has control, but there's going to be some ongoing associated costs and a commitment, maybe a long-term commitment from the city that I'm not interested.
I can answer that. The city would not end up opening, owning that. The city, that would be, right now, the partner, the nonprofit that's expressed interest that came out of the Oregon Solutions Project was St. Vincent de Paul. So they'd be a nonprofit in this case that would be owning the land, owning the park, managing it, targeting long.
That's, that's not going to, obviously, it can't go to private individual. It's going to have to go to an organization that is, has to be nonprofit, correct?
Yes, out of the legislation, yes.
Okay, then I don't see, I, I don't see me falling on the sword for that. I mean, but, okay. Number seven, I can't support because we don't have anything identified. It's lacking information. So therefore I can't support something I don't have enough information on. Number eight, I do support, it makes sense to me. Number nine, I support the concept, but I would like to have numbers, something that provide more information to make me more comfortable to support it. So I'm, I'm not leaning, I'm, I'm not a, not opposed, but I'm more supportive, but I would have to oppose it unless we got some more numbers. Number 10, I support. Number 11, I'm kind of wondering if it's a solution to a problem we may not have. So I'm not sure. I would have to, I would have to look at the information that supports the request. And let's see, remember, number 12, I can support that based on a commitment on the regarding, regarding the ongoing cost. Number 13, I don't oppose, but that's a, it seems like that is a county-driven project and it's not a Springfield city project. Seems like that is in the county's wheelhouse and that's something that they should be coming to us saying, okay, we found some land. You know, this is what we want to do there and let's work together to see how we can get to, yes. But as far as us making any investments in that, that seems like that's completely out of our wheelhouse. And that's that, that falls on the county's shoulders in my mind. So I guess I could say I oppose it at this point. So number 14, I don't oppose it, but it's based on a lack of information. So I could support it if provided additional information. 15, I do support that, accept that it, that I believe that it should be in, in their, in their own wheelhouse and not ours. That makes sense. Yes, I can. So it seems like, I should say, I should write in a county wheelhouse, not our wheelhouse. I know that the county has programs to assist with sub, sub bills, water bills, trash bills. I know that for a fact. And county has assisted Springfield citizens with that. And I'm trying to figure out what, why are we waiting in that puddle when, when that should be coming also from the county? Two different, you know, it's like duplication of services, which means a waste of, of resources and staff time. And then number 16, I'm not totally sure where I am with that. Mostly is that, okay, so if we're helping to pay for some property and people live on that property and it's, and so who does that property go to if it's paid for? I mean, is it, is it going to be given to each, a percentage given to each individual's land? I guess renter or leasor, leasing? It looks.
Yeah, no, it's a good question. So, and I'm gonna look to Tom's shadow to pipe in on specifics. But my understanding is that CASA of Oregon has helped the residents buy the park, but they have a brick loan and they're working toward a permanent loan. And I'm forgetting how large this permanent loan is, but this is to help pay down the permanent loan that would sort of slightly reduce the monthly costs that each of these residents are paying toward that loan. If that makes sense.
I, I, yeah, I guess I'm getting a process, but I'm wondering why we're, why are we involved in that?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Representative Lively asked for this in, in his.
Yeah, I, I get John asking for that, but then, so why is John waiting in on Springfield business or city, city business? If he wants to keep it at the state level, then go for it.
So I guess his projects have been sort of, are needing to come through the city for our, I don't know if approval is the right word. And it's an agreement between the city and the Department of Administrative Services, if that makes sense. That's the process that was chosen.
So if, if it's just for us as a pass-through agency, then I don't know how I would oppose it or should oppose it. So, but if it's just a pass-through, but if it's requiring us to do any administrative work on it or any resource drain or anything like that, then, then I'm not so sure. I would like, I would like to know more because I don't want someone outside of our organization committing our organization to anything. And I guess that's the last of the list. How's that?
Quick.
There you go.
All right, Damian?
Evening. So I mean, a person, I think if we had the resources, we'll love us for all these. But when I think about continuity and self-sustainability, it seems like a lot of these, you know, focusing on housing. And I know it might not necessarily be our role to do this, but you know, how do we provide that initial support for our citizens, but then provide them with some type of skills or some type of resources to be able to, you know, provide for themselves? I know it's, you know, I mean, can we potentially partner with Lang Work First Partnership? I know a lot of these folks, you know, have skills that we, you know, and it's one thing not to have a house. And I know that's, you know, the first need, but you know, to me, it just seems that there could be something done with other organizations to prevent, potentially provide skills for people so they can, you know, be self-sustaining. Two, I'm, one of, one of the things on there talks about, you know, students within the Springfield School District, which I mean, I'm all about supporting youth sometimes more so than adults. But I, I'm curious, what role will the Springfield School Board play in this? And have, are, are they even a part of this? Or have we reached out to them or all that stuff? Actually, I do have one more point. There's another point where it talks about, you know, providing fund for people to build on their land. But just thinking about some of the emails that I've received, not, not necessarily directed to me about how people, I mean, pretty much saying they don't want certain types of folks in their, in their neighborhood. And if there's nothing done to prevent discrimination, I can see that being like seriously problematic. And so, I mean, just overall, those are the, the three things that, when I look at all of them, you know, I, I want our citizens to be self-sustaining, meaning that we provide them with some type of skills, whether it's us or some other organization or a group of organizations. I want our kids to be taken care of, but how are we working with Springfield School Board? I mean, I know they got an equity director or coordinator or whatever, you know, how can we work with them? Because it is, this is a diversity inequity issue. Then three, I fear some type of discrimination if we provide certain citizens who have the cultural capitals to even build, I mean, excuse me, capital and cultural capital to even build some type of duplex or something on their property. I can see some, uh, some discriminatory practices, which in ultimately will end up falling back on us because we provided that funds. I know we like to say that, you know, that, that's, that won't be the case, but I mean, like, there's certain areas of Springfield where certain people wouldn't even think about living. And so based on safety. And so if, yeah, I'm, I'm done.
All right, so I'm looking to, Steve, are you?
Well, I'll just. My own, okay. I'll just go through, I'm going to go through the whole list, but I'll go through the ones that I, I like. And that's the Egan warming, warming site at the Methodist Church that would take care of a couple of things. Plus, can make it legal for, for us to use it for that. My next one is the F Street Co-op Land Trust. Let's build 14 suites as a housing co-op. That's a big deal and people can buy into those. There'd be ownership going on. And cahoots backup band, I don't care what you say. That cahoots are saving us a lot of problems out there in the streets and I want to make sure that we support them the best we can. Downtown porta potties, I mentioned something the other day that the reason we have problems with bathrooms downtown is because we don't have service stations anymore. That's where we're used to, that's where we always went. We don't have that. I'd like to see the, the temporary ones for now. Some, they don't like to look at them, but maybe we could build something around it to make it not look so bad. 200, 25,000 for a permanent one. That's a lot of money. And it's help fund low-income residents with water, trash service. I think that's a pretty important deal. So those are the ones that, that stand out for me.
All right, I'm going to jump in and then I'll let, I'll, I'll let Leonard go. I like the Egan Warming Center for, at Ebert Memorial. I know that that has been an ask for a while to find, you know, and understanding that we need to find the Egan Warming Center a permanent home. And I know that we've seen some, some community conversations about whether or not we want to make that in the memorial building. Like we've, we've discussed this a couple of times, right? Like I think our ultimate vision is to redevelop the memorial building site and moving and investing in a, in a permanent home will take a lot of work off of everybody's plate to, you know, every freezing season, we're looking for a, a permanent site for the Egan Warming Center. One question I do have, Erin, is if we invest in that church, right? And I know June's sitting here in the crowd right now, but is there, are they committing to host? Because we're providing dollars, is there a commitment that they, that they have to host? Is there, are they committing to host? Because we're providing dollars. Is there a commitment that they, that they have to host? An Eagan Warming Site a certain amount of time or is that something to sort of be sorted out in the long term?
Be sorted out in the line, I mean, before it happened, I guess we'd sort it out. I think that would be the hope that we could invest in that. And I don't. I think we could try and figure out with the church, what a reasonable commitment is if it's five years or, you know, whatever that is. I know they could certainly be able to offer other programming if the building was sprinkled too. And so I'd like to think there's a, a benefit to both of us, but certainly at minimum to the city to be able to have a permanent site. So I, I don't know how, my apologies to June, I don't know how the, the church works. Is there a vote, is there a vote? So I've, I've talked to one person as well as June, who's expressed support for the project, but probably getting that formal. Sort of support and approval from the board to do this and then return sort of service and you can say. Yeah, I can certainly look to see that if that's the case.
Yeah, and yeah, okay. So that, that's one of the big questions that I have, but I really want to make sure that we're moving towards a permanent Eagan home. And then a lot of clarity around what we talked about with the memorial building is essentially, you know, that, that, that's a redevelopment site. We, that's what we bought that, well, our friends over at Cedar bought that building for in the long term. Um, the other couple of ones that I do want to talk about. I don't know, I guess what's the, like Ant's heart appeared a couple of times. Is it on the county's project list as well? Is it, is it sort of?
It's not on the county's list. It came out of Lively's list. So Lively had put buying and. Sort of at least buying a house for Ant's heart was on his legislative list. And I've talked to the county and there's a little bit of a haze in terms of like what, how that process works in terms of ongoing support. Knowing that there are so many projects in the region right now that are being put forward. So I think that's a bigger conversation with the county. Is what those funds are available to projects and how does a new shelter essentially get funding? Like, how do we, how do we know about that? Is there funding available? Is it first come, first served? So this is where, you know, I don't. And certainly identified carry it forward as a partner in. In being present in the house and providing case management and ongoing support. And the recent projection is 300,000 year. I don't know that the county is going to get to a place where they can answer that right of way. Which is why, given Lively's sort of putting forward the money to buy the house. Staff wanted to throw this in. It is a possibility if you wanted to sort of like leverage that and invest in that sense, you could do it. There's an option. You don't have to, we could buy the funds and leave it up to, you know, certainly Reverend June as part of Ant's heart has said. If we had a building, we can do so, so much more to fundraise versus fundraise based on a theoretical. So you, you could sort of, like I said, use lively's funds to help them buy it and then sort of leave them to. Sort of fundraise and, and find a source on their own.
Okay, that makes sense. So that going down to four and five, right? Like those really jump out to me. The, the F Street Co-op is the, the F Street version of the C Street Co-op, but like from a price point perspective. We're buying into a homeownership model that's been historically what we've supported as a community. And at a, at a very, very like, a very, very low, a low price point. Like the manufactured home looks good, right? That's separate standalone money. And the other couple that I wanted to pull out. The cahoots van, I would hope that we could all head nod and just ask the staff to program that money, right? Like, you know, walking out of this meeting today, because if they, if we need to have a replacement van available, like we need to have a replacement van available. And then between the two, I, I think I'm with Joe on number 12, right? About the downtown Lou that I. I'm interested in the idea. I think it can make a lot of sense. I'm hearing a lot of support around the table for it. But I think we would have to kind of just know a little bit more to be a hundred percent sure about what that investment looks like. And then. The Mental Health and Behavioral Health Center. I know that there's another community group that was talking about another mental health center out in Thurston. To me, this is a really good project for the county to drive. And if they have us like from, from their perspective, but you know, if we could connect them with the other group that's wanting to do. Mental health work, right? Like I think, I think they could, they can potentially work together there. Um, and the last one, 15, so I read that is a, I read that one as a donation specifically to CCS. To fund those reimbursement programs. Is that, am I, am I reading that correctly?
Yeah. So my understanding is that CCS receives funding from both sub and the county to run. Either project share as it's called, or another version of sort of helping with utility payments or other payments. When talking with CCS about like, is that program fully funded? Are there, is there a greater need than what you have? Staff mentioned that for electricity, they're pretty well funded, but based on their funding sources from the county and sub. They actually don't have the ability to pay for trash and water. And so that's where this was like, okay, is there a possibility to sort of help pay out an overdue water bill or? Trash service that may be preventing someone from getting trash. So that's where.
Is that, do those programs reimburse wastewater and stormwater as well?
My, my understanding is the current programs do not, but I think the idea here is with this, one of the funding sources from the state is pretty open. How it's addressing, you know, folks who might have housing instability or sort of precarious living situation. And so this is an idea that was generated to say, okay, we don't have the same sort of restrictions that the other county or sub funds do. But here it's leave it to CCS to sort of help cover those other, those other needs.
I, I like this project. I think, I think it needs to be sort of vetted a little bit so that we include, you know, other, you know, wastewater, stormwater. In, including the regional numbers, but I also think before we commit money to it. That we, that we should essentially send our letter, a letter to our partners and sub and ask them to match that same amount of money for. Water service has been a gap for them for a long time. If we're going to put money into this, you know, that they should be able to match our contribution to. Help extend that as a program. All right, I had Leonard and then, then we'll start working our way down the list.
Hey, thanks, thanks, Mayor. So my understanding of Aaron was that Representative Lively. Had secured $3 million in state money. Is that right?
He's all, yes, as one, one of his things, yes, has secured $3 million for a new manufactured home park.
Okay, and so what he's asking for from us to. Get this mobile home park on the 33 acres up and running would be just some buy-in. Is that right? I mean, there would be significantly less than the 3 million.
Well, I guess so the 3 million, I think Lively did his part in terms of securing the funds. And. I would say the reason it's here is, so the 3 million was intended for acquisition of land, development costs, including infrastructure costs. So either site infrastructure or road improvements, which I think might exceed 3 million. But I guess the, the, the reason it's here is wanting some sort of general. Sense from this body that I don't think we've come to you with the project. Like, do you support? You know, helping make this happen, like staff putting this effort and right now would be putting effort. For the site that we kind of already own and are trying to figure out, would this be a, a site that we could also work with? To sort of partition off a vacant parcel for this project. And so we're putting there now and kind of wanting to get a sense like, if council doesn't want this project at all, we could also stop. But if you're kind of like, well, let's see, keep going. We have $3 million. How great is that? This is, we have a willing partner. Let's look into it. Is kind of what I wanted to get a feel for.
Yeah, my feeling is that it would be a shame just to leave that kind of money on the table. On the, on, on the site for Eagan, I. I know that. Reverend Father Gill would not turn down the money to have sprinkler system installed in her church and neither would I. I would suggest that the capacity at Ebert is smaller for the Eagan site than the memorial building. And I, I, I was ashamed. I, I was very sorry to hear that it's off the table. I, so I. I'd like to suggest that we pick the memorial building up off the floor and dust it off a little bit.
All right, Merrily, and then it will be Corey after that and see if I can't get the online folks and the people in the room folks in the right order.
I didn't have memorial building on my list, but I just added it back in. Cedar did look at the memorial building from the idea of being a development issue downtown. A redevelopment, especially being across from the project that's ongoing at the moment. And I think that that's where, I believe that that's where the, the decision was, was made. So I just wanted to iterate that. I didn't go down through the list. I'm going to go very quickly. The Eagan warming site at Ebert. I always have thought that that was a pretty good idea. My biggest concern and what I want to see is I want to make sure that it's vetted before it's, before the, the contract and everything is drawn up. June has a big heart and gets a lot done in, in our area. My concern is if she's not there. Will, will the program continue? Will it be ongoing with someone else who might be in, in there and in charge? And we live in a fluid society and we're, we're not, we don't stay in the same place all the time. So I just want to make sure that what June would like seat to see happen there would continue if we make that investment. The Fisher Village, the F Street Co-op, I'm totally behind the manufactured home park. Yes, I agree with the conversation that's taking place. Cooch, I agree with the mayor. I think we should walk out of here and go ahead and do that right now. Downtown Lou, we've got porta potties next to the, next to the, where is it? The art center right now or the museum, one of the few places in that parking lot. And it wouldn't be a bad idea to have a permanent one in that area, in that site. With, go having, having access to facilities. Was difficult before COVID has gotten extremely almost impossible in the last three years. So I don't necessarily see that as a bad idea of having one permanent facility available for people downtown. So that's, I see that. And I, the low income water trash service, it sounds like a pretty good idea too. So I said, I went down through quickly, but that's, I didn't go through that when I first, when I first talked. So thank you.
And Merrily, June was nodding her head, yes, that, that, you know, the church's position that it would continue after she retired. She's sitting, oh, she, she's sitting in the, in the council chambers right now, so.
Okay, well, I wasn't trying to put her down in any way, would say, you know, I, like I said, I appreciate everything she's done. I just had a future concern and wanted to make sure that that was, that was talked about prior to a final commitment. Thank you, June.
Corey, and then we'll go to Joe.
Okay, so I just want to talk about 15 and I'm gonna start by owning just some bias. I mean, we all have opinions of bias and I'm just gonna own them right up front. As, cause I feel differently about this or I'm thinking differently about this than I think both the mayor and counselor Woodrow are. And it's informed by having run a social servants agency. So this. $20,000 would go super fast and I mean, it's basically creating a program. And the fact that we're just, we would just run it through Catholic Community Services. Not everyone accesses services through Catholic Community Services. So there's that. It's like, it's going to probably be, if it's similar to the utility programs, it's on a first come, first served basis. That money goes pretty quickly. People who know to access it, access it. And often folks who may just need it once or didn't even know they needed it and may need to have that kind of assistance. By the time they know that it's available, it's gone. So that to me is for a one time investment. It's like, I realize it's $20,000, but also, I mean, it just, it, it's. Creates a program basically, and there would be a fair amount of stuff to administer that. And then I just dig into just how fair and equitable that is. So that was just all, it's like, I'm not a fan of that. And have reasons for not being a fan of that. And I didn't mention it because I've just, I'm completely supportive of more mobile home parks. And us figuring out how to do that. But also just want to reiterate that I think if we figure out how to bank some land. It's going to give us a lot more wiggle room and whether it's land or buildings, we're going to have more than just the memorial building. We'll have some, you know, some places that we can actually start to develop some of these things in. Okay, that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Excuse me. I, I do agree completely with what. Corey Rodley just said, I'm fearful that we would be creating a program or getting something going and all of a sudden stopping. And the, the line of communications for the, and we know the need is there, but, but you know, it may be better. We may be better off just sending a check over to the county who administers those programs. Most people know that they can go to the county who is the lead social service agency. And, but I, but I, I do, I, I mean, it's a valid program. Tons of people need that type of help. I want to help those type of people, but I want to be able to be as fair as possible across the board. And it may be that $20,000 is a very low ball and we may want to bump that up to 50. I don't care. It, it, it's a good program. But I, but I'm very, I don't know, fearful is the right word, maybe skeptical that, that Springfield may be stepping on its toe, its own toes. By opening this door and, and not really knowing where it's going to go from there and make a commitment down the road. That, that we end up with mud on our face, saying, hey, here was some money. We helped a few people, but we're checking out. And that to me is, is. What poor governance is, is if we don't do it right, don't do it at all. So I agree with Corey for sure. So the, but the. The other part about, gosh darn, and I have so darn many notes here is on number six.
Joe, can I get Aaron to clarify something that, that might help? Aaron, doesn't Catholic Community Service administer that program for the entire county?
I, yeah, I don't know if it's for the county. I think it's for the Eugene Springfield. So the tricky thing with the counties, the county is certainly the lead for social services. But for many things, the county does not actually administer the program. They will hand out those funds through grants. And so some things I think they do and some things they don't. In this case. I can say this is one of those things I'll put on my list to sort of circle back and like follow up on details, but in this case. Yeah, I can double check that, that nuance between what the county administers and then what CCS is administering. I, I definitely know CCS is administering subs program, project share. But I'll, yeah, I can make a note of that.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I mean, I just want to, Sean, I, I'm interested. I don't want to sit there and, and, and try to kill this or anything. It, it just, I want to see us do it in the most equitable manner. Yeah, as Corey mentioned, and, and I think, and even Damian, we want to be fair. And it's super hard when you're talking about all these kinds of funds out there and all of a sudden, all of a sudden, everybody's in such a rush to help other people. That they create all these different layers that make it more difficult for all the people that need to help.
And I, 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 I hear you, Joe. I don't think you're trying to kill it. I think that's a, but I think that when I listened to your comment, which is really on point and really valid. I think that's where that question comes in, which is like, well, you know, because you've got third party vendors all involved and just trying to get a clarification on. On that point, because it seems relevant to the conversation.
And, and I also acknowledge what you were saying, Sean, earlier in regards to approaching sub and saying, okay. Community partner, how can you help? How can we partner together in creating a robust system and, and sending funds to whoever is disseminating those? Or crediting accounts or however it's managed. But I, I want to see other agencies, especially sub. To step in and be a community partner and has nothing to do with community development that they claim all the time. It has everything to do with, with taking care of our community and the citizens therein. So I'm, I completely support that as well. And I just want to circle back real quick and I'll be done is unless someone says something, it gets my. Thing going again, but on number six. So. We're looking at those funds and, and Aaron, you mentioned, and that's what made me come back to this is that you, the way you mentioned it was. To see if there's interest and there's definitely undoubtedly there's interest by, I think, everybody here. But I am, I'm a little bit gun shy when it comes to when you said, should we move forward and we should put some time and effort into this, that type of thing. And, and yes, I think we should, but I am very concerned as to who's going to pay for that extra effort. But I am very concerned as to who's gonna pay for that extra effort. And, um, if it's, if it's going to come out of those original funds that, that Lively had secured, I support that. Um, and I think I would, I would personally support not literally putting staff time into it, but I would support if some of those funds can, can, uh, pay directly for a consultant to do that work and then come back and hand a pamphlet over to this, to document over to you, and then to us saying, okay, this is what we got, and this is what we need, and this is how we can make it happen, can you sign here on this line? That's what I would like to see, I don't want to see us over commit, and I know staff over commits all the time.
I think we're, I think we are, oh, I think staff is in that framework to, to sort of even ask the question, is it even possible to build here, I think is an internal sort of like, you know, do we, what are the road? What, what are we requiring for road improvements, like what, so we can then, um, yeah, knowing we're certainly short-staffed in many ways. I think if we got to the point that it made sense that this was in fact the site we wanted to move forward with, then figuring out, um, we could certainly use the three million. Um, I would say on the staff time too, um, I'm pretty sure, so this was a separate funding to help with infrastructure through the state, but it also may need to be a home-funded project for some of the development as well. And so as staff, I see that also as like working toward helping us use those dollars to, to say, knowing we want to support projects. So it's, um, yeah, it's one of those like spidery, like how do we help developers like figure out what could work? With the hope that down the road, we're also, yeah.
I, I get that too, but if, uh, developers will hire a, their own consultant to do some exploratory work on property, and they do their, you know, a, uh, land use attorney could get, would be able to be involved in that, and a designer, development designer would be involved, and those are all private parties that can be privately paid without us having to jump and start crawling down that rabbit hole and, and find ourselves stuck.
I, I think that's great, I think we're getting at a point, though it is our land and it's thirty-three acres and it's not annexed yet, and we haven't partitioned yet, and so I can't, we don't have something to tell, uh, a nonprofit right now. It's like, here's what your acreage is, figured out what you can build, because they don't know. So we're, I hear you, we do not like, I think staff is trying to just get those basic numbers set first, and then we'll probably come back to council, honestly, at some point, um, but, yeah.
I guess, in other words, I'm just saying, huh, using, use these funds that are not out of the city coffers to do as much as we can possibly do without being, without having to have to use staff time. So I guess, that's what I'm saying.
I will, great.
Seems like it'd be a smart way.
I support it.
Joe, did you have anything else?
Uh, no, Sean, thanks, that's, I think I probably have said plenty.
Uh, Steve?
Okay, well, this hasn't changed, but a couple of comments here, the three million dollars for the mobile home park. Catholic Community Services, that's kind of projects they like, they've got a lot of experience on. I'm, I'm thinking that they're naturally could be involved in that as it goes along. And then the other one here, I wanted, wanted to say, I, I supported, uh, camouflage porta potties downtown. But where'd my list go? Where'd it go? Anyway, uh, permanent, a, a permanent bathroom downtown, Carter Building, we're gonna be tearing down. There's gonna be property available there, and it, maybe in the future, we could cart somehow in that development, we can carve out a corner there, get sewer and water, and, and place it in that location, whatever happens there, so.
It's number twelve.
Yeah, it's okay.
Okay, so it looks like we're winding up from a conversation, so Erin, is there, is there, it was a, a long and in-depth conversation. So I don't know if there's a place that you want to go back to and, you know, or you feel like you've got enough, um, sort of direction, I see.
I, I guess the one piece I would love, I, just because it's, I've heard certain folks, but I don't have a sense of the council, I guess, the one big ticket item that would maybe love some guidance on would be the Anne's Heart operating costs. Is that something that this council wants to consider, um, at this time putting forward? Um, and we could figure out how to, how to fund that or, um, or not. I think that the both pieces of Anne's Heart, I think would be helpful, I think some of the others, I've definitely heard some, but I thought was the majority in terms, I mean, we could run through it, is how I'm thinking about it, but I think that was one I wasn't, I wasn't sure.
And I, and I'm looking around, I didn't see a lot of support for, for, for funding the ongoing costs, right? That was a pretty consistent theme from, from the council, was anything that sort of got ongoing costs that we really want to shy away from. Now, I think you can help point them back to the county, I know that they're looking for more projects and their grant funding to, to sort of support from a long-term perspective.
And that, and that could be something, I know in the past, this council has asked, like, what are those projects we can sort of, um, go to the county and ask for support, and, and maybe if that is something that this council wants to support, but not fund ongoing costs, knowing that the county, it's sort of county's role. We could talk about how that could be a project that, you know, either through the HSC or the PHB or whoever, we talk to the county about funding.
Yeah, yeah, and I, and I think that's a worthwhile conversation to pursue, right? If, if they, if, if the nonprofit involved here does require some sort of support from us, like a letter or something like that, I think that would be appropriate. Corey?
Yes, and, um, because I think I heard that, you know, the, the looking at whether it's land or house or whatever, helping them, which gives them a place to move forward from. But in terms of like the ongoing cost, I think we al- we already have a precedent and of supporting things like Catholic Community Services in a regular way. Um, and so there's this opportunity, and I'm saying this in sort of a clunky way, but just thinking, you know, whatever we can, i- if we all move forward and we're, they're able to find a house, and they're able to move forward with having a shelter, um, then they will be able to access, whether it's CDG, BGB, blah, 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 funding, or whatever, in terms of for pieces of ongoing costs if they're serving people in Springfield. So I think it's like, it's not, it's not a open or close the door, it's a like, are there steps to this? And they may then be in a, in a situation like a Catholic Community Services or a carry it forward that's providing services in the county, that they would then have access to ongoing funding from other streams, if that makes sense. I think I got clearer as I talked longer.
And, and maybe just again, for clarification, does this council support? But in this case, it was Representative Lively putting forward Anne's Heart, support pushing that forward to say, passing that on to this group?
So, uh, help me understand a little bit about what Representative, did Representative Lively pu- put the, uh, capital costs into this as part of his?
Two million dollar.
Yeah, so we, what, what you're asking us is, would we sort of be supportive of him submitting the paperwork and acting as the sort of pass-through organization so that they can acquire the house?
Right.
Okay.
That's what I'm asking.
Okay, I think I got it, Merrily? You're on mute, Merrily.
I guess I'm looking for vetting on that program. Um, I don't necessarily, don't not support it, but I'm looking for vetting as to how it's gonna get set up and who is going to, what, what is necessary for the staffing and how it's going to, to carry on. Um, like I said, I don't necessarily not support it, but I would have to record you right now, passing it through with my support, because I don't know what I'm supporting.
It's, yeah, I, I mean, I can clarify, I guess in this case, the, um, where I see Representative Lively's funds coming in to say, helping this nonprofit purchase a home and rehab it in order to house, um, I think five or six, uh, homeless women, um. Yeah, I think here, I think this, there is a risk here, because the funding is not secured in how it will, how those costs, those operating costs will be paid for. Um, I think that's one of those risks with why Anne's Heart has, I would say, has trouble from a CDBG or home side. There's like, there are so many restrictions, or show me this is gonna be good for five years, and where the nonprofit is saying is like, we need the building first and then we can figure it out. And so I think it's almost like, does this body want to use these one-time funds to sort of help, help them get that next step to say yes? And we could, I mean, where staff would also want to put is like, if that doesn't work out, then let's take the building back and put it forward to a nonprofit, um, for that same purpose that who, who, that could move it forward. Um, but that, that is part of this sort of risk here, um, which is why we're talking about it with these one-time state funds that are pretty kind of, kind of more relaxed on the federal side.
So, um, why don't, my suggestion, maybe we should do, uh, approach it this way. I, I see some additional questions, since there's two parts to this conversation. You've got to come back with a, um, and, you know, it's probably gonna be a couple of weeks with kind of boiling down all the information that we gave you so that we can look at it. Is maybe we get a little bit, some of those questions answered, and maybe we can punt on specifically having the conversation about, about Anne's Heart, Anne's Heart, so that we can get real, a, a lot of clarity on, there's two separate asks here. One of them is really specific to Representative Lively's money, if we were asked, acting as a pass-through organization, and just some broader information there. I'm hoping, would that make sense to?
It also may help, I mean, you've certainly said yes to some things, and some of those projects are certainly only gonna fit certain funding streams. And so that might also, knowing if any of those funding streams have, like, are capped or, um, have money left, then that might help the second wave of conversation to say, okay, here's now what we're actually talking about and what else is on the table.
Yes. Joe?
Yes, thank you, Sean, um, no, I, I, I like that, I think that makes sense too. Okay, we've put, we've thrown a lot back at you, and actually, this has been, I think it's been a very productive meeting for you. It's, it's, it at least appears that way to me. I try to put myself in your shoes, and it's like, okay, well, I, I asked for feedback and you, you got a, a wheelbarrow worth, so. Uh, but I think this is a great opportunity for you to, um, boil it down and put it through the sieve process and really look at, okay, if we go through all this, this is what's left over and where. And then a second list that we can sieve through that says, okay, with the leftover funds, these projects will now fit in those funds. I think, to me, that would work as linear as I think, uh, typically is, I, I think that would, uh, to me, would be very productive.
Okay.
You think, Sean?
I, I like, I think, I think we're ready for that next part of the, part of the conversation, right? Because I think it's gonna help us identify which one of these projects goes to which funding source, and it's gonna force that, that second set of conversations. Um, Erin, is there another project that, before we wrap up, that you wanted to go back to where you felt like, you know, we were a little bit too all over the place? Are you good?
Um, I feel good. I mean, I think some of them need questions answered elsewhere, um, and they will take that time, I need to go out and get some, some questions answered. But I guess also just confirming the Filbert, the Filbert Grove Manufactured Home Park. Um, again, that was one of, uh, Representative Lively's ARPA requests to as the city as a pass-through to give that, and just confirming that I heard many not opposed, in, in which to me translates as a yes right now.
Right, but in, in, for the, that specific project, that's the, we're acting as a pass-through, right? Like, and we're just sort of saying yes to it.
Yeah, yeah. The city will ultimately, I, as I understand it, there will be an IGA with the Department of Administrative Services. Per, maybe, maybe not, but there will be probably some sort of IGA that we will need to sign. And so just confirm that, yes, we are good with signing that as the pass-through to continue.
Okay, I think I'm seeing head nods, yeah, okay. I think the other, the other piece that I just wanna, just want to be conscientious of, as you go into the next steps, right? Like, is sort of, um, making sense out of the feedback that we gave, is, s- I would say spend the, probably the, if you're, if you're attaching one of these funds, right, spend the most restrictive dollars first, right? And leave the mo- most flexible dollars for later, I mean, I think that, that makes a lot of sense. Um, the other piece that, that I want you to, to kind of, uh, focus on is anything we can get done in the next year, right? Like, if, if some of these projects aren't ready, if, if you could bring back a piece of information to say, hey, this is a great idea, it's gonna be ready in five years, it's just not ready yet, that would be a piece of information that I think would be relevant. And then, um, I've, I heard a couple of folks mention this, which was kind of thinking about programming staff delivery, staff time. Um, if we can, if I'm conscientious of the fact that we've got not enough staff to do all this work, and if, if we need to bring in a contractor, you know, a consultant, and we need to program dollars associated in these buckets to pay for those folks, I am good with that. Um, so I don't know what the actual regulations are, but I, I understand that if, that we may need to go out and get more help if we're gonna deliver all these projects. Joe?
Thank you, Ron, or, thank you, I was just thinking of a person named Ron. So the, um, you mentioned about this other, uh, potential mental health type facility in the Thurston area, and I don't know if you, if that got any, uh, fat stuck on the wall for you, Erin? There are.
Connecting the two?
Right.
Follow up after this meeting, um.
So, go ahead, I, I have some names and some people that are very interested in, in doing that, and that they've been on the, they've been planning something like that for the last five years.
Okay.
And, and that they're closer to that edge, and, and it's, it's speci- it's more specifically for mental health for, uh, adolescence and high school age citizens of ours in that, in the Thurston area, so counseling, et cetera. So, um, if you want to reach out to me, that's totally fine, I can provide more information, but I think it may be a, a perfect fit. And they're about in that spot where I think that they, uh, they just don't know how to ask, I guess, what it boils down to, so.
Great, that'd be, I'll send it in.
All right, Corey?
And not to prolong the meeting on Oregon's birthday, um, but I appreciated what you said about, um, getting things done, you know, that could get done in the, the next year, but that also triggered another thing, a thought that I have in that I know that, like, funding is moving, and funds are coming in really quickly from different sources. And I think I said this in another meeting, but I'll say it again, I have absolute confidence that we're tracking that and just want to also say out loud, we need to track that, because I think when you were talking about restrictive funding, it's not just restrictive in terms of, um, what it can be used for, but when it can be used. So I know that different buckets of money are like, this has to be used by twenty twenty-four, this can be extended till twenty thirty or whatever. And so I think that's part of the, the matrix of us thinking about these projects is, maybe there is an opportunity for us to put something on the back burner, not even it's gonna take five or ten years before it would come to fruition, and we have the money to spend, but let's spend the money that needs to be spent quicker. Um, and again, I still believe that then we can leverage that into bringing more funding as long as it's out there. So that's just the other piece I want to say, thank you.
All right, I think we've, uh, gotten to the end of the conversation, so.
And I'll just, I'll add, we have a work session scheduled with you all April fourth to revisit this. So I actually think there might be plenty of time to, and explore and get some answers, so, um.
Good, good.
Looking forward to that.
Great, thank you so much, Erin.
Thank you all.
We are adjourned for the evening, thank you, everybody, good night.